outside Waitrose. Can I ask everyone please to switch mobile phones to silent or to off? And councillors, just a reminder that the... Your name and, um... Microphone card should be firmly in the slot, please. Members of the public, I'd just like to say that as a committee, we understand that the matters under consideration tonight can be emotive. However, please be respectful of those around you, both of you. This is a meeting held in public, it's not a public meeting. Now, just introduce officers in front of me. Maybe one of you could switch the microphone on? Thank you very much. Elizabeth Sims, head of planning, is on the far side. Louise Yandell, who's the area team manager for this particular application. And then Rachel Callas, the principal planning officer, who's going to report on this matter. There are no legal representatives available tonight. So let's move on with the agenda items. Item number one, minutes of the last meeting. As you wish, I confirm, sign the minutes of the meeting held on the 24th of January as a true record. I'm not sure that that's the right...
Twenty seventh of February.
Yeah, wrong one. Go back to the green sheet. The 27th of February, they've been laid on the table for a half an hour prior to the meeting, as you wish, I sign them as a true record of that meeting. Thank you. Two, Emma, apologies for absence.
We have apologies from councillor Stephen Hill, Paul Follows and Pat Frost. And councillors Patricia Ellis and Bob Upton are here as substitutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Emma. Decreations of interest prior to the meeting?
Number saved.
Any at this time? No. Right. Question, number four, questioned by members of the public.
Yes, we received one from Stuart Edge.
Good evening. I probably need just to clarify that the question was asked because of confusion about the papers. Therefore, I think during the debate, some of the issues will come up, which I will talk to in my, with another hat on, in my North West Farnham Residents' Association comments. I did actually ask the chairman if I could just not read the question in this situation, but he said, go ahead and read it. So bear with me, that's what I'm doing.
That's, Stuart, particularly for the benefit of the webcast.
Okay, right, okay, right, thanks. The report on the planning application WA20162455 to be considered tonight contains particular references to adjusting the section 106 agreement in the light of new CIL processes and schedules which I have been unable to find on the Waverley website. The new proposals identified for the first time in papers which local residents became aware of at a maximum nine days before the meeting would provide £91,220 less money in total for infrastructure projects and identify specific projects for proposed expenditure which ignore projects related to the developments suggested by North West Farnham Residents' Association. Could the processes being followed in the specification of CIL-related projects be confirmed as agreed by the council and put on the website where they can be found? And could interested parties such as local residents and residents associations be advised in good time during the planning process of proposed CIL projects? Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. You will get a copy of the reply, but the council does not yet have an adopted CIL charging schedule. The draft proposals for this would see Farnham Town Council receiving 25% of SIL contributions for developments in their area. This would require Farnham Town Council to adopt their own protocol for allocating these. As part of the outline permission and as a result of the amended housing mix, part of this reserve matters application, Farnham Town Council were consulted on possible environmental improvements. Farnham Town Council identified a contribution towards West Street Cemetery railings project. There are corrections to the figures in the agenda report. These are addressed within the revised planning infrastructure contribution section contained on the update sheet. And the case officer will shortly talk you through the update sheet in more detail as part of the presentation. Thank you. Five. Right, moving on then to item five, performance against government targets. Looks like Louise Yandell.
Thank you, chairman. As members will be aware, we have received a large number of major decisions recently. Therefore, for the purposes of this evening, we are requesting that you disregard the report that's in the agenda and an up-to-date, um, update will be provided to both Eastern and Central Committees tomorrow evening and at the next Southern and Western, um, meeting Fabron. Sorry, Eastern and Central on Wednesday evening, not tomorrow evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Right, we'll move on to agenda item number six, application for planning permission. A1, land at Cronddal Lane, Farnham. Approval of reserve matters, appearance, landscaping, layout and scale following the outline approval in 2014, 1565 for the erection of 120 new dwellings with associated access, public open space and landscaping. And I'll ask Rachel Callas to introduce the item.
Thank you very much. Lee, just got the summary of the proposal here on screen for you. I'll start by talking, showing you the site location plan. You'll see the application site outlined in red for you on the screen. You'll see the application site is located to the north-east of Cronddal Lane, to the north of Beavers Road and Beavers Close, and to the west, the University for Creative Arts. This shows you an aerial view of the site. The blue line shows you the application site itself. The dashed red line here shows you a further area of land in the applicant's ownership. The site is currently an area of open agricultural land. It's got a slope gradient of the steepest rise being along the western boundary. There is vegetation and tree cover along the west and the south of the site, as well as a distinct tree line along the northern boundary, just here. Public footpath runs from east to west through the application site, close to the southern boundary. There is a further area of land to the north, that's this area outlined in red just here, within the applicant's control, which has permission to be used as a public open space, and that was secured through the outlined legal agreement for this application. I'll take you through a few existing site photographs before I describe the proposal. These are the views along Cronddal Lane, you'll see the main public entrance into the site just here, and another gated access further to the south, which is shown in this photograph just here. Show you some views within the site. First of all, taking the top, the top image.
Chairman, do you want us to get the front lights off? I find it very difficult to see.
Certainly.
I'll start that bit again. Top photo, it's a view within the site, and that's the view from, looking north from the proposed access into the site and adjacent to the western boundary. So on the plan, you'll see this bit, you can see just here, shown as woodland and kind of vegetation. That's the main site looking beyond that. Turning to the bottom of the screen, this is a view looking east from within the site. It's taken from just adjacent to the southern boundary. Just beyond this vegetation here, you've got the properties on Beavers Road and Beavers Close. Directly in front, you'll see the University for the Creative Arts, and that's also the boundary of the site just there. These are some further photographs which are looking south, towards the south of the site, the southern boundary, and that's again looking towards the properties on Beavers Close and Beavers Road. Apologies, the sun on those photographs might make them a little unclear, but hopefully you can see the properties here. Here we've got some further views looking towards the eastern boundary of the site and the University for the Creative Arts. This is just here, is where the footpath ends, and that's right of way to go through there. And this bottom photograph is within the university site itself. On here, I've included a couple of examples of the surrounding architecture. Starting with a top sort of strip of photographs, you'll see a number of the particular more, more recent developments along Beavers Road. You know, you've got a few two-and-a-half storey dwellings in there and quite a range of materials, predominantly brick in that case. Turning to Cronddal Lane itself, you'll see some photographs here in the centre of the, the centre of the screen. Again, you've got quite a mixture of materials here, brickwork with some, also some render and tile hanging. Turn to Park Lane, a bit further afield from the site, you've got a further example of architecture in the area. Now turn to the proposal itself. On screen, you'll see the proposed layout for the development. This features 120 dwellings and the layout you'll see is based on a series of perimeter blocks broken up by a central green corridor. This section just here. The scheme has a local area of play and a local equipped area of play, both in the northern corner, that's just here, and here. So that's adjacent to the public open space that was referenced on the previous slide. You would see that a green buffer would be retained along the western side of the site, that's this area just here. And you've got several areas of public open space in the site, the most sizable of Lee's being the green corridor in the centre. The proposed dwellings include a mix of two-and-a-half storey apartment blocks which provide for 32 flats in total across three blocks, and a mixture of two and two-and-a-half storey houses. This plan shows the location of the affordable housing. The affordable housing is shown in orange for you. You'll see it's primarily focused in the central parts of the site and distributed within small clusters. Turning to the architectural style, in terms of the design of the individual dwellings, which I'll go on to show you, they're divided and sort of characterised by three different areas. Those are, have the three colours you'll see on the screen, and they're, I'll subsequently refer to them as lacour and the green edge and the parklands. I'll take you through a few of the proposed street scenes now. This is in the core of the development, and I've got a map just here to show you where that is on the proposal. This is the first stretch as you come to on entering the site from Cronddal Lane. You'll see you've got a range of dwellings there, I think you've got two, two-and-a-half storey dwellings, and a flat over a carport just here. On the bottom right, you'll see the range of materials that are proposed. They're based on quite a simple pa, uh, start again, simple palette focused upon varying red bricks, tile hanging, red roof tiles and slate colour roof tiles. Similarly here, this is a, two street scenes taken from within the green edge. This is in the northern part of the development, that's adjacent to the proposed open space. And you've got also that open space on the western side of the site. And just for context, this is where Cronddal Lane runs. So it's those two further edges which are shown in the two street scenes above. The top in particular gives you an idea on how, on the topography of the site and the slight gradient which you have running through it. Turning to the proposed street scenes within the parklands, this is now in the top right of the plan as you saw it on the screen previously. So that's nearer to the boundary with the university, and that's on the far top right there. And also here, a bit further down, and that's close to the entrance to the UCA just here. Here you'll get an example of one of the proposed flat blocks. You'll see looking at a two-and-a-half storey form with dormers in the roof scape and a mixture of, with tile hanging as well featured through that. This is a further example of a flat block and a street scene from that parkland's part of the development, and that's adjacent to the green corridor in the centre of the site. And I'll take you through a few 3D images to give you a further visualisation of the proposal. This is looking towards plots one and two and 13 to 15. This is the entrance to the site as you come in from Cronddal Lane, so these will be the first, would be the first houses visible. This is now in, towards the central part of the site, and that's looking towards plots 74 to 87. So that's the two, the two flat blocks just here, and that's the central green corridor. Here's just looking towards plots 100 to 103. This is in the top right, right corner of the site, that's close to the eastern boundary, which is adjacent to the university. You'll see here, you've got two, two different colour roof tiles which feature through the development and the tile hanging. Now turning towards the top northern part of the site on the left-hand side this time, this is adjacent to the play areas, and it would also face towards the open space to the north. You'll see you've got primarily detached dwellings in this part with the hedgerow boundary also fronting. Before I talk through the determining issues, I'd just turn members' attention to the update sheets. Should have two in front of you, one will be the white one and an additional yellow sheet as well, an additional condition on. The first matter on the update sheet is the planning infrastructure. The planning infrastructure contribution section in the report i- is incorrect. The update supersedes that section of the report in its, in its entirety. Following the publication of the agenda report on the outline permission, that was a 2014 application, SIL Regulation 123 was amended to restrict the use of pooled contributions under section 106. Following the committee resolution to grant the outline, the outline planning permission, further consultation with infrastructure providers was carried out, and the contributions set out in the committee report were amended to reflect those change, that change in regulations. Subsequently, a section 106 agreement was signed and completed pursuant to the outline permission. The mix presented at the outline stage has been amended through this reserve matters application, albeit the same number of overall dwellings as proposed. As such, the infrastructure contributions secured at the outline application stage have been amended where appropriate to reflect the increase in occupants. Subject to the completion of a deed of variation to secure those amounts which are increased, the proposal would acceptably mitigate the impact on infrastructure. On a similar note, in respect to the Thames Basin Heaths SPA, the natural England fee for strategic access management would also be slightly increased as a result of the uplift in bedroom numbers. Again, that is a matter we'd look to secure through the deed of variation. You'll note from the update sheet that there are six further letters of objection that are received, and those are reported for you fully there. They raise concerns relating to the principle of the development, the design and the house types, ecology in open space, flooding, infrastructure, highway impacts, trees and noise. I won't read them in full for you, but there are written responses provided on each of those topics on your update sheet. You also see on the update sheet, there are a couple of changes to conditions I draw your attention to. That's primarily to conditions eight, nine and 10. They relate to the tree protection measures and also the proposed play areas. An additional condition 12 is also recommended. This is a condition which is on your yellow sheet. And I do have to apologise, the wording of this is, is not quite complete. In particular, it doesn't include a requirement, and I'll suggest it's amended to do so, the requirement to replace any trees and/or shrubs that die or become damaged in the first five years. So we propose to strengthen that wording further from what you see on the agenda report there. With that noted, I'll turn you back to the determining issues which I set out for you. Starting with matters of principle and technical opinion. It's worth noting before reading these that the principle of development has already been established through the granting of the outline permission for the erection of 120 residential dwellings, including access. With that in mind, the remaining matters of principle and technical opinion are planning infrastructure contributions, the effect on the SPA and car parking. As referenced in the update sheet, subject to a deed of variation, the proposal was considered acceptable in respect of the planning infrastructure and the effect on the SPA. The proposed level of car parking is considered to be acceptable and would exceed the council's guidelines. Turning to the matters of judgment, they are the design and impact on visual amenity, the impact on residential amenity, the standard of accommodation and provision of amenity and play space, housing mix, heritage and waste recycling and cycle stores. I set out in your agenda report, the proposed development is considered to be of an appropriate scale, layout and appearance, such that it would accept, be acceptable in visual terms, and is considered to be reflective of the character of the surrounding area. It's considered to provide sufficient separation to neighbouring dwellings, such to avoid any materially adverse impacts by way of overbearing form, loss of light or loss of privacy. Proposed landscaping, and in particular, the provision of the open space to the north, is considered to be appropriate having regard to the quantum of development and the number of houses proposed. I'll take you to the revised recommendation for you. Recommendation A is set out for you on the additional update sheet. That is, that the reserve matters of layout, scale, landscaping and appearance be approved, subject to conditions one to seven and 11 on the agenda report, and amended conditions eight, nine and 10 above, and an additional condition 12, that's to cover the landscaping scheme, and a section 106 agreement to secure a deed of variation to the original legal agreement to amend the infrastructure contributions being completed by the 9th of July 2018. The revised recommendation B, which is on the original update sheet, is that in the event that the requirements of recommendation A are not met, that permission be refused for the two reasons set out. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Rachel. We now move to public speaking, and first of all, I'd ask Stuart Edge to step forward and have your four minutes of the microphone.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this application on behalf of North West Farnham Residents' Association. I have taken the liberty of emailing councillors with our view of the recommendations you are being asked to support, and much of what I am to say summarises this email letter. Although many residents very much regret building on the land, we realise that the outline approval made that decision, and as a residents' association, we've been trying to ensure the best development for the current and future residents. We recognise that during the long period since outline permission, significant changes have taken place in the proposals, and generally welcome the improvements. My comments are aimed therefore at the council's proposals for conditions and for the section 106 agreement, issues which we believe you on this committee have the power to amend tonight before giving your final permission. I've handed out specific proposals for conditions to most of you on the way in, and the same as in the, in the email, and, and I'll come to the final recommendation later. For the conditions, the, the first of these that I've suggested concerns privacy issues around Beavers Close and Beavers Road, and makes specific proposals for a change to condition three, limiting permitted development rights, and for new conditions A and B, requiring outstanding rear boundary treatments to be finalised. A second area of concern raised has been the effectiveness of maintenance to ensure that plants in the landscape plan actually survive, based on local cases where such plants have not, and to keep the drainage systems effective. Conditions C and D proposed address these concerns. And the third area of concern, conditions E and F, is to ensure that the intention to keep the open spaces open in perpetuity is actually clearly identified in legal agreements and conditions. Now to section 106 proposals. Against the proposals in the update report, it is clear that local comments have been ignored. As identified in the email letter, these concern the lack of anything for primary education, a failure to provide anything out of the transport monies for the West Street-Cronddal Lane junction or for Potter's Gate Primary School safety measures on Beavers Road rat run, both of which will be directly affected by the development, and a lack of clarity over footpath improvements when we have clear ideas supported by the local rambler's association for what needs to be done. The update sheet suggests nothing can be done at all, as it has been determined. However, we believe that it is this meeting which can determine the final projects. Finally, one additional point, which wasn't in the email letter, on to the section 106 agreement. Why are projects totaling only 534,152 being proposed? In the reports, the 2015 meeting, page 92, when outline permission was granted, the table of section 106 contributions totaled 894,518. On whose authority was this reduction agreed, and what is the reason for the massive reduction of some £360,000? The original report on the section 106, which was incorrectly issued before this meeting, identifies specific projects totaling some £823,000. So the answer cannot be that satisfactory projects are not available. We are therefore proposing an amended revised revision, sorry, revised recommendation A, which I've got many copies of here, and if that becomes appropriate, which increases the total funds to about £914,000, a figure consistent with the outline JPC meeting, and uses the time allowed before the finalisation of the section 106 to carry out further local consultation on appropriate projects.
Thank you, Mr Edge. I'll ask Mr Thomas Rumble to, to step forward as supporter of the scheme.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, members. The grant of outline planning permission has established the principle of residential development on this site, including 40% affordable housing. It also approved a fixed means of vehicular access from Cronddal Lane. Since the outline application was approved, we have evolved the scheme design, which has been informed first by a pre-application process, and then an over-year-long application period. This has included numerous meetings with your officers, correspondence with the relevant statutory bodies, the council's urban designer, a public exhibition, and finally, as some of you may recall, a presentation to members earlier this year. As sit out in your officers' report, this reserve matters application is recommended for approval, and there are no objections to the scheme from any of the statutory consultees, including the county council highway department. The scheme's key benefits include the following: the delivery of a mix of housing accommodation, including properties appropriate to the needs of prospective first-time buyers and families as identified as needed in the council's housing assessment; a policy compliance provision... a policy compliance provision of forty-eight affordable homes, assisting the council in meeting the needs of the housing register; a design that has been subject to engagement with the council's urban design officer, including a detailed design review. A traditional design is proposed and a character area-led approach followed, whereby three different character areas are provided. The respective character areas all benefit from differing design approaches through variations in their elevational treatment, architectural detailing and road surfacing. The proposed properties are largely two-storey in height, with some limited accommodation in the roof scape provided at key focal point locations. The proposed scale is therefore domestic and appropriate to the site's edge of settlement location. Convenient walking routes through the development are provided, including towards the additional public open space to the north, the central area of open space and towards the town centre via the site's south-eastern corner. The scheme respects the amenities of neighbouring properties through a well-designed layout that includes a detailed landscape strategy, well-designed house types and an appropriate palette of materials. The separation distance between the proposed and existing properties is substantially in excess of normal development management standards and is further filtered by a comprehensive landscaped buffer. Publicly accessible amenity space and children's play areas are provided. In terms of car parking, the scheme provides an additional twenty spaces when compared to the Borough Council standards. This has been provided so to minimise any pressure for future on-street parking. In response to Mr Edge's comments regarding infrastructure contributions, I note these were agreed at the outline stage, as is normal process when confirming the principle of development. As per your officers' report, the dwelling mix has changed slightly since the outline stage and in turn, the section 106 agreement is to be updated to increase the contributions accordingly. It is for all these reasons that members are requested to respectfully approve the application consistent with your officers' recommendation. I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr Rumble. Well, this is an interesting application in front of us. It's been registered for seventeen months. So that's something to bear in mind. Some of the comments raised by Mr Edge are some of the questions that I'm sure members would wish to raise themselves. So I would just remind everyone that we're here to talk about layout, scale, appearance and landscaping as per the reserve matters. So let's move forward with the debate. Counselor Hyman.
Thank you, Chairman. I think it's a daunting for me to speak first as I'm a board member for Castle Ward. I think the history of this scheme says a lot for it. It's of seven sites with potential. When this came forward, this was the only one that was rejected by the Farnham people and it was a... And for that reason, I think it remains very controversial locally. It is of course the biggest development in that part of the town at the moment, although perhaps there would be something coming forward at Coxbridge Farm and I think most people would prefer the latter. Now, this is a difficult one for me to approach, Chairman, because we don't have any planning lawyers with us and this is something I addressed one, a year ago, almost to the day. It was the tenth of April last year, you might remember. I queried at the St George's Road application whether the catch-all principle of environmental law applied. So whether it was correct that we were being told that we can only look at the issues that are in front of us and whether the issue of the Crookham Park sang could be reconsidered and should be reconsidered in view of a little bit more we know about it since. Now, without lawyers here, I did have the agreement from Mr Lucas, our planning lawyer, a year ago that the catch-all principle does apply. He stated, thank you, Chairman, the catch-all principle does indeed apply and thank you, Mr Hyman, for confirming. You're correct, it does relate to the habitats regulations. I'm grateful for your clarification on that point. So for me to keep hearing that we're not allowed to look at that issue, the reason that I'd want that looking at is because if the habitats regulations were applied properly and we're looking at, you know, not having any evidence obviously that inviting people to travel over to Church Cook and pass the SPA through a large housing development to a very unattractive piece of land which they've got problems with over there, I think everybody accepts that's a problem. If we're able to look at that, then the real issue, which is the restriction of development in Farnham in accordance with Article six four, would allow us to look at what is the big issue here and it's the traffic and air quality issues. Now, I'm not going to go into those in any detail because it's a matter which is in front of the police and, you know, I think most people would want us to look at that before we make a decision on this. But without our lawyers here, Chairman, I cannot proceed at all. So I think I'll have to go to the, I'm going to, I think, although I listen to others, I think I'm going to propose a deferral so that we can have some of these issues clarified and perhaps even a site visit to Crookham Park so that people can see for themselves what we're talking about. I think that would be best because certainly without lawyers here, there are some mistakes I've noticed in the... I did meet with Rachel before this afternoon, but we didn't have time to go through everything. I did mention to her that there were problems with the section, with the wording of, the rewording of the recommendations that we've got in front of us, Chairman. And I'm happy to touch on that, but I think that in view of perhaps other issues which are what other councillors would think is practical issues of development that's in front of us, ignoring the history and the possibility that this should be refused or ask for further information on habitats grounds. If I may go to the update sheet, which is the first one, the white update sheet that we've got in front of us. It says in there, we have got issues, of course, with the infrastructure contributions. I understand that we can't do much about that because it was all agreed. The constraints were put in place or the limits were put in place in the outline consent. That's something that I don't think would change. However, we looked at the habitat's effect on that, we wouldn't change that. But it does seem wrong that a major development like this with our one hundred and twenty homes, I don't know what it's going to equate to, but perhaps a forty million pound development is paying for very little towards the massive amount of money that Farnham needs. Perhaps we can't go back on there, but we have to query why we have a puff-in crossing that's being paid for when, as Mr Edge says, there is so much else that needs to be done. I appreciate North West Farnham Residents' Association have put a terrific amount of time into looking at this and looking what ought to be done and it's rather galling that it doesn't look like there's going to be any great reward for all that work that's been put in. They're just being told we can't change this at all. Although Mr Edge did specifically address the issue of why it had reduced, the amount had reduced by three hundred thousand pounds or so. And I'd like officers to address that first in their response if they would. So if you would please respond to Mr Edge's question and explain to us as members what the situation is for us in respect of this decision. Should it be increased? Is Mr Edge right? Or if he's wrong, can you please explain why and whether there's anything we can do about it? The update sheet tells us that the proposal would acceptably mitigate the impact on the SPA and then gives, that is of course for us to decide tonight. We require evidence for that, that's what the law says. And the sheet says, "An appropriate assessment is not therefore required." Well, how can we conclude that it would acceptably mitigate it if we haven't assessed it? You can't conclude something unless you've looked at it and assessed it. You know, we need to see that assessment and it's not here. We need an assessment of the, at least of the efficacy of Crookham Sang. And so that's why I would ask for a deferral on those grounds, for further information from the developer. Because we have no control over what Fleet does or what Hart District Council does. It's not as though it's a waverly sang. We don't have any control over that and it is privately owned. As far as highways issues are concerned, it's on page six. It says that measures have already been assessed and carefully considered. Now, Richard Cooper came along to our meeting, the meeting of this committee back in February 2015 and he explained this quite fully what exactly had been done. And he said, if I can find it, the quote, he said, "We've also modelled the cumulative impact of the development within the context of other committee developments in the area and also the level of growth expected. The modelling work that's been done has utilised a strategic town centre model that the county council has for Farnham. That's called a paramics model and that's a model which has been previously used for the East Street development, for example, to test the impact of the highway improvements that were secured." And goes on to say that this has modelled all of those together. Well, we know now that the East Street, as councillor Frost has told us at the town council meeting, that we can find no evidence that it has been modelled. This is something we've been asked about. Now, if this has been based on a model which hasn't actually included what's really going to be done at East Street, then, you know, we seriously need to take another look at that and we need to perhaps get Mr Cooper back in front of us in that respect or certainly ask him to show us that model. So again, that's a reason for deferral. We need to make sure that's sorted because of course it would be entirely wrong with the air quality situation that we've got at the moment to allow this development to go ahead if it's not necessary to do so and certainly at this time until we've got a solution, Chairman. So if I then move, if I may, to the recommendations that we've got, which... Sorry, I've got so many pieces of paper in front of me. We have a revised recommendation B here, which we're being asked to look at on, well, it's page nine. Obviously it starts on page eight, but it's on page nine. "We require the deed of variation to the legal agreement to secure infrastructure contributions." That's okay. But if we look at recommendation two, B two there, somewhere in there I noticed, it states that this is paragraph 118 of the MPPF 2012, that's below halfway down. We need to add paragraph 113 to that because that is the statutory, refers to the statutory instrument. If we, on the next line, it says Regulation 62 of the Conservation of Habitats and Species. That's either a typo or some sort of error because that would be Regulation 63 in actual fact that it refers to, Chairman. And so we certainly shouldn't agree that as it is. It says, "Permission must therefore be refused in accordance with Regulation 61.5." But we also need to add to that the terms of, which we normally do have in these recommendations, the terms of Article six four, which is that there is a, that we have not received the imperative reasons of overriding public interest. We have not satisfied the Article six four. So we do need to change this in order to satisfy the legal agreement. We haven't got lawyers here, so I don't know that I can get an agreement on that. And again, that's the reason why I think we should defer this application, Chairman. But I'm going to stop now because everybody else has heard what Mr Edge has said and I'll let other people pick those up. But if he misses anything, particularly on the conditions issue, Chairman, may I come back later? And I will when I come back, I think, unless my mind is changed by what other people say or officers' responses. I might well ask for a deferral on this. Thank you.
And Counselor, I think Elizabeth Sims, you wanted to step in?
Chairman, if I could just say at this point, do understand the points councillor Hyman is making, but the three things I wanted to say, just to reassure members. Firstly, it's regrettable we don't have our legal colleagues here tonight. But actually, to answer the questions that have been raised, I'm not sure it's absolutely critical. We can give you absolute assurance that the approach was taken at outline stage in respect to mitigation of effect on the SPA was lawful and is sound. It's established the principle and it runs with the permission in relation to supporting the reserve matters that are before you. So the situation of the principle of development hasn't changed, although clearly the SAM tariff does require a minor modification to the section 106. But that is not the point. The point is that the mitigation that was agreed for the impact on the SPA at outline stage remains sound and you can be confident in your decision tonight that it's not appropriate to revisit that principle. With respect to what councillor Hyman said, I think it's really important that I do make that point. The second point is a query about the highway contributions and that Richard Cooper did attend the meeting, I think, when this was at outline stage. The important point is the highway contributions have been recommended by the highway authority or the statutory consultee as being the most appropriate form of mitigating this development. And the modelling that they've applied is sound and it's what they use to devise their conclusions in relation to different developments where they take into account the cumulative effect and recommend the appropriate mitigation that's required. So we're also confident that that part of the existing legal agreement is also perfectly sound and acceptable for you to rely on. I'm just going to hand over to Rachel because she might have a couple of other points she wants to clarify. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Just a short bit of clarification regarding the planning infrastructure contributions. Firstly, I apologise that the errors in the outline report have caused some confusion. And in fact, from the outline permission committee, the update sheet for that did recommend further consultation with the infrastructure providers in order to establish appropriate contributions. And so for that reason, there was a change in the infrastructure contributions that were sought and secured as part of the legal agreement from those that were in the original officer committee report for that application. That therefore impacts on what we can request as part of this application. It is actually an increase over the amount sought at the outline permission. I appreciate the errors in the agenda report, which were incorrect, do confuse that slightly, but it is an increase over what was secured at the outline application. And it's an amount that is considered to be proportionate to the increase in bedrooms from the outline scheme. And that's really dictated what contributions we can seek. What was not considered appropriate was to introduce wholly new contributions, an example being primary education, that were not sought or secured at the outline stage. So to a large extent, that has tied the hands and all the contributions sought on this application do still need to be proportionate and take into account what was formally secured as part of the outline permission. Hope that helps.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Counselor Adams.
Sorry, I must be being particularly thick tonight, but I don't quite understand that answer at all. I mean, on page whichever it is here, which is not clear, of our report, it talks about nine hundred and fourteen thousand as the infrastructure. Unfortunately, there's no page numbers on this, nor version numbers, nor anything on this report here, the green report. It then goes on to say that they've identified projects worth eight hundred and twenty-three as... And then we go back to this update sheet and it suddenly says, you know, the new 106 is five hundred and thirty-four. That doesn't stack up that that's an increase on the nine hundred and fourteen.
Thank you, Chairman. If I can just explain what has happened here, the infrastructure section in the agenda report is incorrect. If I can take you back to the... Yes, that's right, the one with the green thing. It has been... Both. So if I can...
Sorry, could I use your microphone, Counselor Adams?
Which was actually signed with the outline consent?
Okay, if I can take you to the update, the section in the update on infrastructure contributions completely replaces the section in the agenda report. At the time of the outline permission, at the time of the outline permission, the contributions were secured on page two of the update in the left-hand column of numbers, which is five hundred and thirteen thousand, sorry, five one three zero three four point four three. As a result of the change to the mix, this is now increased to five three four one five two point zero eight. And that's a proportionate increase to reflect the... a proportionate increase to reflect the increase in bedrooms. Now, the error happened because the original, when the original application was presented to committee, there was a change to the SIL regulations which happened, I think a couple of days before the committee took place for the outline permission. So the figures that were presented to committee at that point didn't reflect the changes to the SIL regulations. As a result, members resolved to approve that application, subject to further consultation with the infrastructure providers. And the amounts which are set out on page two of the update sheet reflect those amended infrastructure contributions which the infrastructure providers could secure and could justify as a result of the changes to the SIL regulations. So this application, the reserve matters application, effectively increases the amount of contributions to take into account the increase in bedroom numbers. Hope that clarifies the issue.
Well, not really, because we're not operating SIL yet, we're still on 106, isn't this one? And 106, are you saying that you failed to negotiate the 914,000, is that what you're saying, in the first...
Yeah, so firstly, even though we haven't got SIL in place yet, the SIL regulations still apply and they still cover section 106 issues, so we do have to still use that legislation. Secondly, at the time of the outline, the infrastructure providers couldn't justify some of those contributions. The only contributions that they could justify in that they had projects that they could relate to the proposal are those that were secured as part of the outline permission.
Councillor Mullin.
Thank you, chairman. Just for my curiosity, I can't imagine these houses are going to be limited to people who are over childbearing age, so why is there no primary education contribution?
So following the committee, we did consult with Surrey County Council Education, and they could not justify a contribution. They would need to identify a project that would be required as a result of this scheme, and at that time they could not identify a project, which effectively meant we didn't have the justification to secure that contribution in the section 106.
Thank you. So this is very educational. So although the effect of putting 100 houses up and a large number of children emerging and having to be educated, which has an important revenue cost, the whole point of CIL or section 106 is purely to provide capital contributions, not any contribution to the revenue implications, especially when perhaps there's a surge of numbers.
Elizabeth Sims.
I think the simple answer to that is, in seeking advice from the statutory provider as to what they can justify through section 106 contributions on a developer, they need to identify a capital project that they will spend the money on in the appropriate timeframe, which is relevant and necessary, directly related to the development, and at that time, bearing in mind that the regulations did change exactly at that time, which constrained the number of contributions that could be made for one particular project, and required for all the infrastructure providers to step up to the plate to make sure their contributions were directly related and justified and bespoke, it's quite a challenge for them overnight, really, that on that particular occasion, they weren't able to satisfy the SIL regulation tests for section 106 agreement, that there was a project that they could ask for that money for. Now, it may be deemed as regrettable, but your decision has to be lawful, your 106 agreements have to be signed against the regulations, so at that time, the contributions were found to be appropriate, but they did exclude a primary education contribution.
Thank you. Just one final question, that is helpful, I'm quite serious about that. What was the 208,000 that was originally earmarked for, which I appreciate somehow became inappropriate, such a large sum of money, it can't have been dreamt up, so it would be nice to know what it was for in the first place.
Louise.
Effectively, we don't know, because prior to the change in the SIL regulations, the money was collected and put into a big pot and then taken out as and when projects were identified. The change to the SIL regulations effectively changed the way around, the whole process needed to work, the project needed to be identified first and then the money collected, whereas the money was collected first before that and then projects were identified as and when they were considered necessary.
No, thanks. In fact, I was drawing my attention to the fact that there is a primary contribution which was to do with St Peter's C of E, Rethelsham, so presumably they sort of stopped having that particular project.
I'll just, leaving that particular point to colleagues, but what I would say, members generally, is since that time, three years have gone by since that time, the Education Authority have developed their plans much more cohesively, and they are able to respond much more effectively to the challenge of, there's a section 106 agreement merging for this project. So I just wanted to reassure you that things are much better, but this was caught in that transition, so it's a difficult one, but that is where we are. I don't know whether colleagues have got an answer to that point that councillor Maddox asked.
Thank you, chairman. I'm just astonished to see this change, the scale of this change, and that it didn't come back to the committee when we were actually considering the outline permission, because it seems so fundamental to the basic outline permission to have such a major reduction in the section 106 agreement, that I'd have thought, chairman, with hindsight, it would have been appropriate to bring it back to the committee for the committee to be made aware of it before we got to this stage, because now we're in a hiding to nothing, you know, we've got a done deal now, and we don't seem to have any mechanism for correcting it. But frankly, if it had come back at the outline stage, I wouldn't want to cast a brush as to what the decision would be, but I could well see that the committee would change its position on the outline permission, but that is now swept away from us. So I'd have thought if we, maybe it's a thing for the future, chairman, to recommend if there are major changes to infrastructure contributions or any other issue after the decision is taken at outline permission, it does at least come back to committee for review, because it is, you know, so fundamental. I mean, we've seen applications in the past where frankly, we have said if the infrastructure contributions can't be made, then we aren't going to go and grant permission at an outline stage. And it's such a huge change from 914 to 513, it's absolutely fundamental. So I appreciate it's water under the bridge, but I mean, it really is something so fundamental, I do think we should have had the opportunity to come back, and if it ever happens again in the future, I would strongly urge it brought back to committee at an outline stage. Thank you, chairman.
A point very well made, councillor Band, thank you very much. Councillor Ward.
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, I do share other councillors' amazement that we are constantly being told that things that we decided at the outline stage cannot be challenged, and yet we find that infrastructure contributions can be almost halved behind our backs. I am just gobsmacked, frankly. I also really find it amazing that Surrey County Council could not come up with a project to absorb money which was being effectively offered to it, when we hear of difficulties of people getting into their schools of choice, SCC being totally strapped for cash, so, you know, I go beyond amazement to gobsmack. However, I have two questions, which I would really love an answer to. One of the objectors' comments on page 23, I have a little magic black box, so I'm in the fortunate position of having page numbers, says that there are 23 out of 48 affordable houses single bedroomed, and our needs are only 19. Could officers please comment on that? And also, going through this agreement, I may have missed it, I am not the most brilliant in vision, but I cannot find anything about long-term maintenance of the green boundaries around the site, except for a few questions from objectors. Could officers tell me if there is an agreement for maintenance of the green boundaries around site in perpetuity, and if there isn't, can we put one in, please? Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor. I think, Rachel, are you answering that?
Thank you, yes. I'll start with a question about affordable housing. If you saw place to turn, if you've got page numbers, I've handwritten mine on, so hopefully they're going to match up. Around page 31, the housing mix section of the report, be worth directing you to. It sets out a comparison between the SMM requirements and the amount and the exact number of affordable housing points being proposed as part of this. As part of that scheme, you'll see we've got 21 bedroom units, 14 two-bedroom units, 12 three-bedroom, and two four-bedroom. That is a mix which has been supported and negotiated with our affordable housing officers, they're very much supportive of this mix. Clearly, there's quite a significant need for affordable housing of all sizes, so officers are certainly confident that it will meet a need, albeit with slight discrepancies from what's in the SMM, nonetheless, it does meet a need and there's no objection there from our affordable housing officers. So hopefully that bit's helpful. Just remind me of the next question, sorry. Landscaping, yes. If I can turn you your attention to the orange update sheet, I do apologise the wording I'm about to refer to isn't actually on this update sheet, but we would propose to include it. What that is, is securing the landscaping plans which are submitted, and that's what give you the detail of the plants and the species type which I used around those site boundaries. What we're proposing, that any species or planting which dies or becomes damaged within the first five-year period is subsequently replaced by a like-like replacement. In addition, the legal agreement on the outline permission does secure a long-term management company which will be responsible for maintaining all of those public areas within the site, and that will include those areas of landscaping, particularly on the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see on the western side, a larger landscaping there, and as you refer to, also around the site boundaries, and in the middle, find my mouse. So all these sorts of areas here, you'll see would be under the control of a management company. As I say, we do have a legal agreement to secure an appropriate company to manage that, and in addition, we do have that condition which does give some control if any of those species do die off, and it also secures firstly the provision of that landscaping in the first place. Hope that's helpful.
Councillor Ward, does it... Want to come back?
Do I understand then that in the first five years, fine, they're going to replace things, but thereafter, basically, things can die and tough luck?
By then, I should think it'd become part of the management committee's responsibilities.
Thank you, chairman. I suppose I'm going over old ground because everybody else has rattled on about it, but I cannot understand how we always, as members at a committee, have to make a decision, and we make a decision on the basis we know that that is cast in stone and we cannot change it. And yet, we come forward with contributions that are totally wrong, we should have delayed initially the planning meeting that we had in the outline phase, if the changes to the regulations with regard to SILs as opposed to section 106, and we can't go back. So we're in an absolutely stupid situation, where we've made a decision which turns out to be wrong, because we didn't have the right information in the first place. Was that because we were rushed in, and I presume that our planning officers here did not produce the text or the numbers for these things, it was produced by another department to be put into this report, and they're not here to answer our questions.
Councillor Adams.
Could we, in this landscaping master plan, will there be a date as to when the master plan landscaping is to be completed by?
Yes, thank you. This is required to be provided prior to the first occupation, so before one dwelling on a house gets occupied, that needs to be completed to the council's satisfaction. Thank you.
Councillor Olls.
Thank you, chairman. Could Rachel just clarify where it says about the management company, because I can't find any reference to that, but I probably haven't looked thoroughly enough.
Thank you, yes, not go mad, it's in the original legal agreement, where the management company provisions are set up, not in the conditions, thank you.
Thank you, chairman, for letting me come back. A couple of other questions. First, may speak for others, could we please have a rule that all JPC papers are numbered? Makes it very difficult to find places. Could that be absolutely invariable? Thank you. Secondly, how is the management company funded? Is there a service charge for each house in the development?
It would be usual for, yeah, it would be usual for a service charge to be levied on all the properties to pay for the management of the open space.
Could I suggest that, again, in the report, as this sort of feature tends to be a question that members regularly make, if details were put into the report to exactly how these long-term obligations are to be met, it would just save us asking the inevitable question every time. Thank you.
Councillor Coburn.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I really wanted to come back and have a look at the scheme. I feel we, it's not that I disagree with anything that's gone before, but, you know, we are where we are, and as councillor Band said, we have to make a decision on the position we find ourselves in now. And here we have our proposed layout for a scheme that was given permission. I don't think it was given permission wrongly, they changed the rules after the permission was granted, but, you know, we're in a difficult position. Having said that, having looked at this scheme, and having seen its first incarnation and probably its second incarnation, it was frightful. It was like so many reserve matter schemes that we get back, where we are just so disappointed, we feel it doesn't relate to the community, the community hasn't taken part in shaping it. And I have to praise North West Farnham residents, not for the first time, for their sterling efforts to do something on this site, because it wasn't universally popular, any more than the first greenfield site in Cranley, I'm sure, when it was taken. So it has been controversial, but looking at this site now, yes, there may be problems with the landscape further down the line, but look at what is proposed at the moment, the amount of landscaping is really going to soften what could be quite a harsh frontage, but you are where you are in these things. You have a site, you have a set of conditions that are put on it outlined, and you have to look at what is on offer. The palette, all of us, every single one of us sitting in this room, would probably design something slightly different, and if we all put our ideas together, we'd end up with a complete pig's ear, wouldn't we? Because, you know, it is so difficult, everybody has slightly different interpretations, but the palette, when you look around the, yes, I was thinking more, you know, when you showed us the three of the ones, Crandall Lane, it is a very mixed area, a lot of brick though, and some render. And the top of Beavers Road that you're showing here on the whole is the modern stuff at Cranwood Gate, and you've got the Victorian, I presume there are semis on the other side. So, you know, I, going back to the layout, which is what we're here to look at, the reserve matters, I actually can't see much wrong with this scheme. I can see areas that I would improve, but given where it is, given the hard work of the officers and the local residents, I really think there is, what we have achieved here is a scheme that will sit well in its site. I'm still worried, like everybody else, of the occupiers of Beavers Close, because they are low and, you know, we are worried, but there is a fair amount of landscaping. Beavers Road have long gardens, and again, I think the landscaping will work there to a certain extent. Obviously, it's going to change, as soon as you have a housing development, it changes the landscape, it changes the nature. Does this one change it so much that we have to turn it down? I honestly don't think it does. I think of its sort, notwithstanding all that people have said, and I agree with every... I think of its sort, notwithstanding all that people have said, and I agree with every word they've said, I think, given where we are, that we have here a reserved imaginative layout. Lots of things, we secured that field as a green space, that's something we are keeping an eye on, to make sure that doesn't slip through. We want a real belt-and-basis job on that one. But given its setting, given the hard work of the officers and the local residents, then, you know, I really think we can move on, or I hope we can, and actually look at the scheme, which is really what we're here tonight to look at.
Counselor Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really following on from what Counselor Coburn was saying, could we put up the slide which shows the affordable houses, and where they're located? I had a concern when I first saw that, but I think this goes back to perhaps the improvements that's been made to the layout, that the... Those houses, although they're concentrated in the centre, they're probably more exposed to the green areas within the site than the others. So I think that's quite a good use of space, and perhaps will give greater amenity to the affordable houses. So whereas I was initially against the sort of layout there, I think on reflection, I think the developers have done very well with that particular layout. Thank you.
Counselor Holder?
Thank you, Chairman. I have to say, we've seen so many of these plans that I get slightly confused. But am I right in thinking that this application, we've already discussed in Committee Room One with the applicant? That's correct. Well, when we did discuss it with the applicant, we were talking about the primary school, which is situated just off the site, the bottom right-hand corner. There's a primary school there. And I did ask the applicant at the time whether the people on this...
Hold on, Counselor Holder, I think you're confused. Not quite on the corner.
Well, he did say that the people on this site could have access to that primary school. In which case, why isn't a section 106 contribution for primary education for the people living on that applicant?
Back to that one again, yes, you take your point, but Surrey County Council didn't come forward with a request. Counselor Lee?
Thank you, Chairman. Just three things, I think. There's a good table there of technical space standards and how the applicant has met those standards. And it's very gratifying to see that they have met quite a number of them. But I would personally like to see a hundred percent meeting, because, for example, we have three-bedroom houses, two stories, some of those bedrooms are less than the eighty-four recommended at eighty-one. And there's a two-bedroom house where the recommended seventy is standing at sixty-seven. Now, I think everybody is deserving of minimum technical standards for their health and wellbeing, so that's just an observation. I appreciate that, you know, we don't have this within the local plan yet.
Yes.
The other aspect is that we have parking, which, again, fulfills our standards, however, they were conceived in twenty fifteen, were they not?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. And I'd be very surprised if anyone around these tables felt, and certainly today, felt that they are adequate for the actual practical needs of vehicles. So I would like to think that going forward, we might revisit those standards and see if we can get something a little bit more realistic. And the other comment, the final one, is, under Condition Four, we talk about garages and how they are to be used. I would find it, well, perhaps we would all find it very helpful in the future if we had an appreciation of the size of garages, to see how realistic they are for modern vehicles, a range of modern vehicles. So I just make those particular comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Point well made, yet again. Counselor Hyman, you want to come? Sorry. Counselor Upton first, then.
Thank you. I'll come back to my bane, Marie, which is the point of electric points for electric cars. I've raised this point before on new developments, and the thought of private householders running leads out from their houses to charge the cars when they're not parked adjacent, in most cases, to these properties, is going to lead to confusion and a lot of danger. I'm just wondering if the point of considering providing the minimum requirement of electric points on this site. Thank you.
Louise?
Just to advise you that we have secured electric vehicle charging points as part of a condition that was put on the outline scheme, so they will need provide details for a scheme for the provision of electric vehicle charging points for us to approve prior to the commencement of the development. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chair. That's not been taken out of the provisional scheme, then, I see. Thank you.
Counselor Hyman?
Thank you, Chairman. I was rather hoping that by this stage, we'd have had a chance to run through the conditions or proposal, both sheets of conditions that we've kind of been given by Mr. Edge. But first of all, I'd say, you know, from what I've heard, can you just confirm to me? Because listening to what the Vice-Chairman, Counselor Coburn, said, where she said that the rules were changed after the consent was granted, I thought that we were being told that actually the rules had changed a few days before the consent was granted. So, you know, in actual fact, that we didn't realise that I wasn't on the committee in twenty fifteen, February twenty fifteen, or was it the April first meeting, twenty fifteen? Because it was deferred and came back, didn't it? So...
Louise, Yanda, I'll give you a quick answer then.
Yes, so the legislation changed a couple of days before committee, but the important point is that, at the time the Section 106 is signed, it needs to be in accordance with the relevant legislation. So the Section 106 was signed following the committee and was considered to be in accordance with that new legislation. Thank you.
Right, so the members who had put this through didn't know that, you know, they could have, could have but probably weren't told that it was all going to change and that it could be reduced. I could understand that they might be quite disappointed about that.
Louise, come back, I think, at this point, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, members were advised at that committee that the legislation had changed, and the members resolved to grant the application subject to a further consultation with the infrastructure providers. And it was the contributions that went into the Section 106 agreement were those that were subject to that additional consultation. So that was agreed with the committee at the time that it was presented to the members.
I'm very surprised that they were happy with that, and they agreed to that. If they'd known surely that it could change by that amount, they wouldn't... But anyway, Chairman, let's leave that, because we're not going to get anywhere on that point, are we? What's done is done there. I think let's park that where it is. And I don't take it as an offence to me, certainly, because I wasn't on the committee at the time. From what I've heard, from what people are saying, I appreciate that it has been said that, you know, this is a done deal. It's in, you know, we can't revisit the outline, and so we can't do anything about the infrastructure contributions. But actually, you know, I believe that we've got very sound and simple legal grounds, that we don't have an assessment of the, you know, from Taylor Wimpey, or Natural England, or anyone else, of the sang. We don't know that, we haven't visited it, we know it's got problems, and we know no one would ever want to go there from Farnham. But, you know, some sort of assessment is what is required by the law. And I want, we could change this, we could go back, revisit the infrastructure contributions, revisit the traffic issues and make sure it's modelled properly, revisit all those concerns that people have got here, and perhaps also, you know, address details of the sites, you know, thirty-seven parking spaces across the site for, you know, the reduced parking that we see in here, and certainly the boundary treatment to the south, and certainly the landscaping. But this is a detailed application. I want the details of the landscaping in front of me, I want to know how those neighbours on Beavers Road and Beavers Close are going to suffer, and whether they are going to get a deal out of this that works for them. And that should have all been sorted by now, and they've just been messed around despite the time that's gone by. And I know some are quite, you know, unhappy, because they feel that they've got nowhere, and they feel that they're going to get nowhere unless we take a fairly strong position here. You know, there are certainly the southern boundary treatment, Chairman, and to do with the planning infrastructure contributions, I would like this to come back to us with some certainty. I want to know, I think, the question would be, would we be on sound legal grounds, i.e. able to withstand a challenge, if we were to refuse this reserved matters, using the contractual principle, which we know applies, on grounds of no in combination impact, no assessment of the in combination impact, no assessment of the heaths, and no imperative reasons of overriding public interest? Because that's where this would come to, it would be the imperative reasons of overriding reasons of public interest, on the big issue of the roads, which is what we should be looking at this development on, quite frankly, and wasn't, to my mind, looked at properly in the same respect of it wasn't on sangs. But we can't bring the roads back unless we come back through the habitats issue, but that's there for us to use. So, you know, when members are negative and are saying that perhaps, you know, we just have to go from where we are, where we are is that we know damn well that it wasn't. I know it's been said by the officers that mitigation agreed remains sound. I don't think there's anyone in this room that thinks that the mitigation at Crookham Park is sound, and we are perfectly entitled to decide not. Not. It's our decision.
The sang's already dealt with, we're not here to discuss that.
Well, Chairman, can we perhaps sort this out with lawyers? I mean, we have been trying to get to meet with our lawyers, and we haven't been able to do that now for a year on these. Andy MacLeod did try to as well, and we'd like to, and they're not here. And perhaps if we were able to, because I am as sick as everybody else in this room as having to bring this issue up and not getting the ultimate answers. And it's not the officers who are here's problem, you know, they're not, you know, that's not their remit, and it's not their expertise. But we do need to sort this out at some point, Chairman, and it's been said we're going to get a workshop...
Do you have a new point, Counselor?
Can we, well, that's my question, would we be on sound legal grounds and able to withstand a challenge? Because I think we should look at these issues of the planning infrastructure contributions, the landscaping, we want that back, you know, there are various issues, and bring this back to us when we've got all the details for what is supposedly a detailed application.
Are you moving a motion?
In that case, well, I'm not sure whether I'm going to get an answer to that question. I'd like an answer to that question, would be on sound legal grounds, before I move it. But if I'm not going to get an answer, I will certainly move for a deferral to get an answer to that, Chairman, if that suits you, if others are happy with that.
Elizabeth?
Thank you, Chairman. I think probably the question is, if you were to defer it, and the applicants were to appeal against non-determination, would the reasons that you've suggested in terms of being concerned about the development be upheld on appeal? My recommendation, that of my colleagues, is I think you would find it very difficult to defend and appeal on the grounds that you've suggested, Counselor Hyman. I think most of those issues have been firmly agreed and dealt with at the outline stage, and I think we would find the appeal would be allowed and probably be held to be unreasonable with costs held against counsel. Thank you.
I have other people to speak, Counselor Hyman.
Please, yes, if others want to, but I will move for deferral if, before or after they want to speak, I don't know what they want to do.
Counselor Goodrich, I think you wanted to speak first.
Chairman, we can't move the goalposts. The fact of the matter is, this went to outline permission, I was on the committee at the time. All the matters that we have to decide at the interim stage concerning the sang, highways, all those things were gone through in detail, and the permission was granted, in outline, as we know. What you can't then do, in my view, and I am a retired lawyer, which I suppose is a bit better than others, we then entered into a contractual agreement with the developers, which is a contract and legally binding on both sides, which you can't just tear up and say we want to try again. Now, I accept what's been said previously, that unfortunately, the impression that the committee had on the amount of the contributions that would be negotiated was a figure, and it came out at a lower figure. But that agreement has been reached. To now suggest that we should reopen various issues, which have been contractually dealt with and where we've gone through due process, I mean, to suggest, I suppose, that we should have a judicial review on a decision we took three years ago, is nearly as absurd as the absurdity that Counselor Hyman is suggesting, is unreasonable. The matters before us are as set out in the report, and the layout seems fine to me, the buildings seem fine to me, and all the matters that are before us seem fine. It is normal, and I don't see why we should be doing anything abnormal on this particular application, that we do not, as a committee, decide on every brick sample, every tree that's going to be planted, and all the minute detail. We rely on our officers' expertise on the principle of, on the landscaping, for example, on the principle of providing a good screen. We are not here to decide the tree should be this tree or that tree, and it should be placed there rather than there, because otherwise we'll be here all night, every night. And therefore, the condition that's being put on, that there will be a landscape scheme carried out and approved by our officers, is the appropriate way of going forward. Now, if Counselor Hyman wishes, as the local ward member, to see that and be involved and talk to the officers concerned before that agreement's drawn up, that's a matter for him. But I think from this committee's point of view, I don't want this matter deferred, I don't want this matter adjourned, I want to deal with it, and I want to leave it to officers to sort out the details of the landscaping, for example, and not have to be personally involved in those sort of issues.
Thank you. I think for the third time, I'll just make the point that we are here to talk about the reserve matters, layout, scale, appearance, and landscaping. And as Counselor Coburn said a short time ago, the scheme has improved quite dramatically over the three years since it first of all came in with outline. I think the appearance and the layout has dramatically improved, the scale likewise. So I would ask members, please, not to revisit sangs, Surrey highways, or anything else that is in the past. It's already a done deal on, and we can't revisit that scheme. Counselor Adams?
With the Chairman's indulgent, I would just like to make one comment about one of Mr. Hyman's, Counselor Hyman's worries. I'd like to assure him that in the local plan Part One, we made extensive and very thorough traffic assessments of the whole of Farnham, using the parametric model, which included every development which, in fact, either planned or possibly planned. So that model takes account of all the traffic requirements of Farnham, including all of East Street and the Wallmead.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Els?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It might be worth pointing out that there are twelve detailed landscaping plans included in the application drawings, and they are also numbered again under Condition Twelve. So we have had ample chance to look at the landscaping proposals for this site if we so desired. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Deans.
Thank you, Chair. Unfortunately, we have got sidetracked a little bit on 106, which is a shame because we are here to make sure the scheme's the best that we can possibly get. And we started off this evening with Mr. Edge speaking very eloquently and he handed out some conditions. And we've sort of not really spoken too much about them. And I just wanted to just ask a couple of questions on them. A lot of them have been covered by landscaping and I think they're covered overall by them. But the first one, amended condition three, again, I would just like clarification why we can't have that condition, because that will give a lot of comfort to those people from Beavers Close. I think condition A and condition B would be covered by your landscaping strategy anyway. I think the additional C, I think has been clarified, that's five years, which is good. And if I'm right, condition D would be part and part of a SUDS agreement anyway. I won't really go into E and F because I'm not sure we're in a position to discuss that. So going back to that first one, that seems to be the only one that hasn't been answered, whether that is applicable. And if we're possible, I'd like to give that comfort to those people. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, that's the one on Beavers Close, isn't it? And I support your thoughts on that one entirely. Rachel, would you like to come back on that?
Yes, thank you. Matters of residential amenity firstly, it is a matter of judgment. So you are entitled to come to your own view on that. We have had a look at the distances between, trying to get the mouse working. It's this boundary here which is in question. This is Beavers Close, just to the south of the development. And it's a judgment for you to come to really as to the proximity of the proposed dwellings to the existing dwellings on Beavers Close and whether indeed that warrants a potential problem from those permitted development rights being exercised. If you do feel it's likely to result in overlooking your loss of privacy, then you're certainly entitled to amend that condition to impose that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. As you said, it is a matter of judgment. I've heard what Mr. Edge said. I've looked at your diagrams. My judgment, I think that would be a good amendment to that condition personally. And I'm sure my colleagues will have the support otherwise.
Yes, I've already seconded it. So, yeah. And I thought we had discussed this last week. So if you could just make an note, Rachel. Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Chairman. This is more pointed personal explanation, but with respect to councillor Goodrich, we do have a law Habitat's Regulations nine, which says that a competent authority in exercising any of its functions must have regards to the requirements of the directive so far as they may be affected by the exercise of those functions. And you do know that your lawyers have agreed, after looking it up, that I am correct in as much as the contractual principle applies. And we all here know that the SANGs certainly that are proposed do not have the, cannot provide, we don't have the convincing objective evidence that is required that those are effective. And in fact, it's nowhere near that convincing. It's not a matter of, you know, it's maybe it'll work, maybe it won't. We all know it's farcical. And so to suggest that we cannot revisit this is completely wrong. We must. The law requires it. I have to say it, whether people like it or not, because it comes upon me to try and uphold the law, Chairman. The law says we've got to consider this. And if anybody says we haven't, then they obviously don't have that understanding of the law. And I don't blame people for not having read it. They can't read every law that's out there. We don't expect it. We do need to know this. I'd like to propose a deferral because, you know, I'd like to know who thinks that, you know, we should be basing this development on a SANG over in Church Crookham, because certainly members didn't two or three years ago. They all thought it was ridiculous, but were told they had no choice. Of course, we have a choice. You know, there are other forms of mitigation that are possible, though we've got Farnham Park and the rest of it if that were necessary. We don't have control over this mitigation. So I'd like to propose, if I may, Chairman, that we defer this to get details and an assessment from the developers.
Thank you. You have a second, though?
I'll ask for a second. Thank you, councillor Ward.
Councillor Ward, do you want further to that or shall we go straight to the vote?
It's very simple that we, I would say that we require an assessment in accordance with the directive and the statutory instrument circuit of six two thousand and five, in the same way as, you know, we need to change these recommendations actually at the end of this. I don't know about this, Chairman. We would like an assessment of the efficacy of the SANGs and the impact on the SBA. I would add that, members might be interested to know, for instance, that when Taylor Wimpey first brought this site forward back in two thousand and seven, I think it was, as a SANG, their Crookham Park SANG, their consultants said that we required eighteen hectares per thousand people. It's since been reduced with no evidence to eight hundred. We need to know facts.
You've put a motion forward for deferral.
So I would move for deferral, not only on those grounds, but also for details of the boundary treatments on the south, because I think we should certainly need to know that before we grant consent, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Right, I'll put that to the vote then. Those in favour of deferral, please show.
Two, three.
Those against?
One, two. Abstentions.
Abstentions?
One, two, three, four.
Thank you very much. Motion is lost. Councillor Forreski.
Thank you, Chairman. Just one point I would like to make with regards to the permitted developments which I fully support and I think are really important, but perhaps a further endorsement in terms of giving confidence to all those that are happy with this scheme. We have, I do have some sympathy actually with what councillor Hyman is saying. And earlier on, I would have supported a deferral, but given some of the things that have been said since, I've changed my mind. One of the areas I have a concern over is, things do change and schemes do change as they develop and are built. And we've seen that in Cranley. So we've seen developments come forward which have come back later with additional dwellings for a variety of reasons. So in terms of giving confidence and somewhere in the conditions, can it not be stipulated that the number of one hundred and twenty remains at one hundred and twenty and there's no expansion of the site? I know that might be veering into a viability issue, but I think we need as much control as possible. Everybody seems happy with the scheme. A lot of people seem happy with the scheme and a lot of work has been done. And I think it's our job this evening to make sure that going forward, that figure doesn't change, that doesn't affect the scheme, because we have seen it on other strategic application sites when numbers have increased after we've made a decision here, which is why I have some sympathy with councillor Hyman's point, that, you know, we can go back. On this occasion, I believe we can't. But please, if you could bear that in mind, because I think it would give all the hardworking people more confidence if they knew that figure was going to remain that for as long as possible. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Louise Chendell.
Thank you. This application will be, if it is resolved to be approved this evening, it will be granted on the basis that it is for one hundred and twenty dwellings. Should the developer wish to come back for any additional dwellings, that would require a new planning application that would need to be assessed on its own merits at that particular time. As such, it wouldn't be necessary to attach a condition to that effect because it is already controlled by the planning legislation. And where a condition is not necessary, it doesn't meet the tests to be applied to a planning application. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Councillor Coburn, do you want to come back?
Well, it's just that something councillor Forreski said, I think it was councillor Goodrich also said something similar, that if there are minor changes, and I'm not talking about numbers, that they are worked through with a local member as a matter of course. And it is something that we've raised before, you know, so I'm not talking in major changes. But if there's a change in, I don't know, back to good old landscape, you know, that you do discuss any changes like that with the local members, a regular pattern of behaviour.
Councillor Nuttitt.
Thank you, Chairman. The only thing I'm worried, it's more than a hundred houses and education wise, there's nothing. I mean, could there be any way, I'm just asking them, the offices have done fine, I agree to it. But could there be anything we could do about education? Because there will be kids coming with the people who are buying the house over there. Just a request, nothing else.
There is a contribution that has been secured towards a project at Farnham Heathend School to provide a new sports hall as part of the expansion of the school. We wouldn't be able to get any other education contributions as they were already agreed and secured at the outline stage.
So there is one.
There is for secondary education.
You've got my word now. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I move to the recommendation, the officers want to come back in any time?
Chairman, just one last point, that just to be absolutely clear, any proposal to increase the number of dwellings, even by one, would need a fresh planning application. So any minor changes that were agreed would still need to be captured through non-material amendments and they would be within the council's gift to control. So you can be absolutely confident that the monitoring and the building out of the scheme is subject to planning control, depending on the scale of it. There is a process to deal with that. But certainly the increase in numbers is absolutely controlled. They cannot go above the number they've got permission for. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Forreski, do you want to come back?
Thank you for your indulgence and thank you for letting me come back. I absolutely appreciate that. I really, really do. But I do think we've seen too many examples where this has happened and they've come back and we've increased the numbers and you get a different set of circumstances, you get a different membership around the table who don't know the historical value of it. And that can then influence that a scheme can change. So my point is, is that on goodwill and a lot of work that's been done by officers and everybody involved, you've got a scheme there tonight which seems acceptable and the principle of development has been established. It would be just nice to have the assurance over and above what is acceptable through an alternative application. And I know it's difficult to do because you're talking about planning and material planning considerations. I'm just saying, there has to be a mechanism outside of this where maybe, as councillor Coburn says, residents along with societies, along with the applicants, get involved at the early stage to make sure they guide it and restrict it as much as possible. Thank you for letting me come back.
Thank you. Elizabeth Sims.
We could add an informative if it would really help to make the point. It would just make a point which is probably very obvious to the developer, but if it reassures you that this is a permission for the number of dwellings that have been permitted, and clearly any increases on that would need fresh planning application.
Reassure us and residents, let's say. Councillor Stenner, last one.
Thank you, Chairman. I know the development mayor is referring to, and I'm currently dealing with an application that has come back, which is for a further five houses, I think, in Amnitz Lane. And they have, they are being dealt with by delegated powers, I believe. So as a local councillor, we're not getting involved in that. Or we could call it in, I suppose. But there is a certain lady on that site that has been there years and years and years, and the houses are going closer to her boundary. I think Mary has made a very good point for common sense. And I think that we should follow it through in any way and which way we can to give the residents some protection, because it is vitally important. That particular lady, I think, has lived in that house for thirty-plus years and is at a wits' end. And the builders are just doing exactly, I think they've already put the foundations in, which to my mind doesn't ring true. But it's only a point. But I think if we can tighten that up, I think that's a very good idea. Thank you.
Right. Members, we move, councillor Lee, and then I'll move to the recommendation, please.
Yes, of course. Thank you, Chairman. It is just reinforcing the point made by councillor Forreski. And I'm thinking in terms of procedure. If an application has been determined by JPC and changes are come along the line, then I think it should go back to JPC. So if it was determined at area, it should go back to area. Because my own personal experience is that we approved at area and an application for three houses and four flats. And subsequently, it's been increased to six flats. And that never came before the area committee again. So I'm just trying to stress that I think we should have the same sort of judgment each time when these changes come up. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the head of planning's already made the point that we'll have an additional informative on this and subsequent applications so that we know exactly where we are. Right, move to the recommendation yet again, that the reserve matters of the layout, scale, landscaping and appearance be approved, subject to conditions one to seven and condition three, with the permitted development rights that we've already talked about being amended, and eleven on the agenda report, amended conditions eight, nine, ten, as noted in the update sheet, additional condition twelve as amended to refer to the five-year replacement thereafter, five years after the first occupation, and a 106 agreement to give a deed of variation to the original legal agreement to amend the infrastructure contribution figures completed by the ninth of July twenty eighteen and the additional informative. Those in favour of the recommendation, that revised recommendation, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Those against? Abstentions?
Chairman, may I ask a point of clarification as to what recommendation we're on? Because we've got a revised recommendation on the yellow sheet, the latest. Does that replace both A and B, one and two?
It's what I read out, as we've amended, as we've gone through. We've still got recommendation B to go through. But we have amended the recommendation as we've gone through with the councillor Deans's change, the five-year change and the other bits as we've gone through.
Okay. So on the orange sheet, that would be revised recommendation A. That is what we've just agreed, haven't we, yet? So it isn't a change as it implies that removes...
It's revised recommendation A, as I've just read out.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm right about that. So we're going to look at recommendation B, because I have mentioned that and I wondered whether the officers would like to say, because I don't think we should agree to number two. It's got a number of mistakes in it. And I think they probably agree with me on that.
Let me just find the right piece. Paper with recommendation B. Revised recommendation B, that in the event that the requirements of recommendation A are not met, that permission B refused for the following reason. One, in the absence of a deed of variation to legal agreement secured under WA twenty fourteen one five six five to secure infrastructure contributions that are fairly and reasonably related to the amended housing mix and to identify specific projects, the development fails to comply with regulation one two two brackets two and one two three of the community infrastructure levy regulations twenty ten as amended. And two, in the absence of a deed of variation to the legal agreement secured under WA twenty fourteen one five six five to secure the appropriate natural England fee for strategic access. Management, brackets SAMM, brackets, the proposal, brackets in combination with other projects, brackets, would have a likely adverse effect on the integrity of the Thames Basin Heath Special Protection Area, SBA. The proposal would fail to comply with any one and any three of the local plan twenty eighteen part one, policies FMP twelve and FMP thirteen of the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan twenty seventeen, policy NRM six of the South East Plan paragraph one one hundred and forty. six of the South East Plan, paragraph 118 of the MPPF 2012, and the Thames Basin Heath SBA Avoidance Strategy Review 2016, and regulation 62 of the Conservation of Habitats and Species Regulations 2010 (the habitats regulation). Permission B therefore be refused in accordance with regulation 61 (5) of the Habitat Regulation, article six (3) of the Directive 9243 EE.
Officers are confident in the reason for refusal, but in light of councillor Hyman's comments, then we can run the specific wording, pass consultation with our lawyers prior to releasing that decision, if we need to refuse the application on that basis.
So recommendation B, can I have those in favour, please show?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, oh, 19.
Those against? Abstentions?
Yes.
One. Thank you very much indeed. That concludes our meeting. Thank you all.